Good evening, everyone. I'd ask that you please rise as Rajan Zed, President of the Universal Society of Hinduism, leads us in our invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
My hearty thanks to Mayor Ben Shire, Councilor's Administrator Bremseth, and Shepherd's Network for making this invocation possible for the great city of Fergus Falls. Om. Bhur Bhuvahasvahat Tath Sabhitur Varanyam Bhargo Divasyimahi Diyo Yona Prachodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Sadgamyam Tamsooma Jyotirgamyam Mrityar Mamratham Gamyam. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasmadha Saktastatham Karam Karmasamachara Sakto Hya Charan Karma Parmapanoti Pursha Karma Nava He Samsidhi Massita Jankada Ya. Loca Singraha Me Vapi Sampa Shankar Tomraha Si. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world by devotion to selfless. One attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om. Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Peace, peace be unto all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 March 15, 2021, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council. We're just gonna wait one second. Scott, we got a couple council members still joining us. One second. We'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call.
Here.
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 That fish is out.
We have a quorum. First item of business this evening is the approval of the agenda. I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. There are a couple items that have been added. Good evening, Andrew.
Yeah, good evening, Your Honor, council members. We do have two additions to the agenda this evening. The first on the consent agenda is a resolution setting a final cost hearing for PI 6074, which is the 2020 sidewalk and driveway improvement project. That final cost hearing will be April 5, 2021. And then the second item is a resolution authorizing staff to obtain quotes for a mobile performance stage, which we'll put at the end of the ordinances and resolutions.
All right, thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion approving the amended agenda.
May they, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Tom. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening, there are no bids to award, and there are no petitions or communications. Under the consent agenda, there are six items for our consideration this evening. If anyone would like to speak to any of them individually, we can remove them. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda. Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Brent, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, we have six items this evening. The first is a second reading of ordinance 11, eighth series, relating to the solar energy systems. And I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, for some change in wording to that ordinance.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. This before you tonight is the second reading, so of course, at the end of the discussion, we need a roll call vote. We have had several opportunities for public comment previous to tonight. After the discussion last time, I thought we had really good discussion. We did make one minor change to the ordinance. I would direct your attention to page six of the ordinance, understanding that they don't have page numbers on them, but if you flip through six pages, you'll get there. It's under 154.138(c), Section 2, Subsection 2. And I'll just read. We added two words, "developed and constructed roads." So now that section reads, "public right-of-way and road setback of 50 feet from the right-of-way edge of all public roads and other public right-of-ways, or 130 feet from a center line of a developed constructed road," whichever is greater. It previously just read "center line of a road." And we have instances throughout the community where there are road right-of-ways in place, but they're not constructed roads. And we want to clarify that the intent of that would be 50 feet from those right-of-way areas unless there is a developed or constructed road, which then you're looking at the 130 foot from the center line. So if there isn't a road there, but there is a road right-of-way, it would be the 50-foot setback from that right-of-way. That's the only change we made. So, Your Honor, council members, I think previously we committed to allowing folks to provide public comment at the second reading, and then from there, again, looking for a roll call vote this evening.
Thank you, Andrew. As you mentioned, there has been ample opportunity for public comment on this through the Planning Commission in both council and a public hearing, a community meeting. If there's anyone who has anything to add that has not been discussed or any questions, I'd entertain them at this time before we call for the vote. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That ordinance is approved. Item number two is a resolution approving a joint resolution for the immediate annexation of land in Abuse Township area owned by Otter Tail Power for the Hoot Lake Solar Project. And again, we'll call on Andrew Bremseth.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As everybody's aware, Otter Tail Power is working on a 49.9 megawatt solar farm located just east of the city. Some of the property currently is within the city limits, and there's portions of the project area that are both in Ardall and Abuse Township. So it is Otter Tail Power's desire to have all of the property within the city limits and follow the city's ordinance that was just approved by the council. So as a result, we've been working with the two townships to figure out ways in which we can accomplish that. Before you this evening is a joint resolution with Abuse Township. We have been meeting with them the last few months, and at their recent meeting last week on the 15th, they, or excuse me, I don't remember the date, last Tuesday, March 9, they unanimously approved this joint resolution. So just real quickly touching on some of the provisions within the resolution, the annexation area is 280.99 acres with a population of zero. In exchange for the annexation through this joint resolution, Abuse Township is asking for 20 years' worth of lost taxes in a lump sum, so the current value of those parcels over 20 years, which equates to $13,522. Otter Tail Power has committed to the city to reimburse us for those costs related to the 20 years of taxes. And then also, I want to note that the annexed area includes the road right-of-ways out there, so the city would then be responsible for maintaining the roads, which we already do, but we build back to the townships through an agreement that's in place. We would be in charge of everything that Abuse Township has, all the way to their boundary on Main Street, which is within this project area, so no problem for us. And then finally, there's a statement in there saying that the city will pass ordinance basically stating 150-foot setback, which may be reduced by 50% if the array is fully screened, and there's an agreement between Otter Tail, in this case, and property owners, which is then recorded at the recorder's office. So we certainly are complying with that provision by the ordinance you just approved with those very terms in it. So just want to note, joint resolutions are really a good option for cities and townships to do this or achieve this type of annexation, because really it allows the township to benefit from the annexation, just like the city. And in this regard, like I talked about, the township would be getting 20 years of what they would have otherwise gotten at current value on these parcels to be annexed, and they would have continued to be billed for the road maintenance in the area. So we feel it's a good compromise. It's an agreement that's fair to both parties. And like I mentioned, Abuse Township already approved this thing. So if the council's on board, we need a resolution tonight, which then gets filed with the Administrative Law Judge down in St. Paul. We would make the lump sum payment within 30 days of the annexation order, and then everything is good to go with Abuse Township. So we're continuing dialogue at this point with Ardall Township, trying to have a similar joint resolution, which hopefully could be before you at your next meeting.
Thank you, Andrew. We can accomplish that with a resolution?
I'll offer, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin.
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Any questions for Andrew before we vote? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the city to extend interest-only IRP loan payments for the Outstate Brewing Company until July 1, 2021. We can do that by resolution. Andrew, Bill, anyone have any?
I can address that if you're...
Please do, Anthony.
Just, obviously, Outstate probably got hit harder than, obviously, a number of businesses. As you probably know, being in the food and entertainment business, you were shut down a lot, and they came to the business development for Fergus Falls and requested an extension of interest-only payment on their loan to the end of June. The Business Development Board obviously looked at that request and agreed that that would be the right thing to do to help a business in Fergus. So the recommendation to the council is to accept interest-only payments from Outstate until the end of June.
You offer that resolution?
And I'd offer that resolution.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions for the council for Anthony? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number five is a resolution setting a final cost hearing for public improvement 6074, the 2020 sidewalk and driveway improvements for April 5, 2021. Oh, we added that to the consent agenda.
We did, Your Honor.
Got it. We can cross that one off our list.
You got it.
Let's go to a resolution authorizing staff to obtain quotes for the mobile performance stage.
I think you're missing one item in there regarding the Carlton Companies, a resolution of support.
Yes, we are.
So if I could approach that one, Your Honor?
Please do.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. Carlton Capital Investments LLC, which we probably know as Carlton Companies from the work that they've done on the demolition at the dairy and working with the Port Authority as well, is asking for a resolution of support from the council as they apply for the Minnesota Rail Service Improvement Program, which is a grant program through MINDOT. They are looking at this grant to expedite building of a rail spur on the property they just purchased from the Port Authority out north of Wyron's Road. And Mr. Ben Carlton is with us this evening, and I would ask that he shares a little bit of information about his project, and then, like I mentioned, he needs a resolution of support, which is one of the requirements of this particular grant program.
Good evening, Ben. Welcome. Would you like to address the council?
Yes, I would, Your Honor. Hello, my name is Ben Carlton. Been here before. So this is procedural in nature. Basically, MINDOT has got a, when we first came to you guys, they didn't have any funding, and now they're trying to kick off a stimulus and infrastructure program, and they're looking for projects that are shovel-ready, ready to go. And they basically don't want to build this in your backyard without a resolution stating, you know, that you guys are aware of, that there's going to be a spur and a scrapyard and unloading and loading of railcars, which I had in the original CUP. I also would like to, there is other businesses in this area that could benefit from transloading. There's a big enough site that I don't have needful use of the rail, and I'd like to work with, there's a couple businesses that approached Greater Fergus Falls, and basically, once I put that infrastructure, I'm going to put in an 80-foot scale, and I'm going to have a scale attendant and staff that's loading and unloading scrap material, they could easily unload other materials for businesses in this area. And so again, I guess what I'm looking for is a resolution for basically procedural for the MINDOT application, saying you guys are aware and supportive of the project if MINDOT does award the grant to us.
Thank you, Ben. Offer that?
I'd offer it, and then I've got a comment.
Sure. Second by Caroline. Thank you. Go ahead, Anthony.
I would like to offer my support. This is definitely something that I know at least two businesses that are desperate for transloading, that they're bringing things into St. Cloud and then trucking them up here. So it would move that work from St. Cloud to Fergus Falls.
Definitely. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Ben. Scott?
Just a couple of questions. There are a lot of folks in town that have never been on Wyron's Road and don't necessarily know the neighborhood, and so it would be helpful to describe where this is. And then I was just wondering how long this is, how many railcars you expect you'll be able to put on the spur at a time?
So the rail goes across the north section of the property, and we're gonna, there's a wetland on, I don't know if they're pulling up quickly, but there's a low area that is just south of the rail line, and we're going to basically go in a north-south direction, and the spur is going to be exactly north-south, just north of the existing substation that cuts across the north, that's right there. And I think it's nine or 10 railcars that we can come across.
So where the, up where Tower Road crosses the railroad tracks up there, there's a red caboose that sits there. Is it going to extend the place where that red caboose is, or is there going to be a new one on the opposite side of the tracks?
No, it's going to be on Wyron's Road. So it's going to be up on Wyron's Road. So it'll come into...
The north, right?
Directing on the north side of that substation that sits right there.
Okay.
So if I could just point right here.
That'd be good.
So this is the property, and the way we got it sitting, there's a little pond right in here. We're just going to come in with the rail spur, it's going to come straight across the property right there, and then basically a road with the graded area will come up, and there'll be a scale right here, and then we can have scrapyard in this area and then utilize some of this, if a truck needs to come in with existing businesses that in the area need to bring freight in, it makes sense to utilize that area with my staff already there.
I support the project, and I think it's a good one. It looks like it actually runs east and west, though, not northeast.
Yeah, you're sorry. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ben? Thank you, Ben. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Now we're on to the resolution authorizing staff to obtain quotes for a mobile performance stage. Andrew Bremseth.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. I am prepared to speak to that one as well at this time. So, all joking aside, you all recall that the Downtown Riverfront Project, which we've been working on for several years now, previously included an amphitheater as part of the project. And last year, as we were working through various issues related to the project and the pandemic, it was ultimately decided that we wanted to remove the amphitheater from the project. The two primary reasons being, one, that the amount of bonding that the city received from the state, which was 1.75 million, was less than the requested amount, which was 2.65 million. So we were in cost-cutting mode. And two, we had multiple iterations of the amphitheater, and we never could achieve the desired capacity even after we doubled the capacity related to that space. And so it was kind of logical that that would be the component that would be trimmed from a budgetary standpoint, since it was already undersized as designed. So since that time, we've continued dialogue with Mr. Bergeraf from the Center for the Arts and other stakeholders in the community about some of those needs, and it's evident that there's certainly needs for performance space and activities in the community. And with various locations now being utilized for these events, whether it be up at the Kirkbride, behind the building, down on Lincoln Avenue, we've had some real good shows over the last few years, or even within this project boundary, which will be completed as part of the Downtown Riverfront Project, we identified that a performance, or a mobile performance stage, may be the way to go rather than an undersized amphitheater. And what that, I'll let Michael talk about what a performance stage looks like and includes and how that can be used, but from a high level, we've done a little bit of research on this, and you can get one self-contained unit, which has stage, lights, sound equipment, the whole nine yards. And we're looking at approximately 150,000 for an asset of this type. We've been working with a local trust who's identified interest in this project to the tune of $50,000. So the remaining cost would be the responsibility of the city should we proceed, and staff is proposing that either comes from liquor store proceeds or potentially from the latest round of COVID relief funds, as a justification could be made for the use of something like this. So tonight, I'm looking for a resolution directing staff to obtain quotes, so we can talk to multiple companies about what this may look like if the council wants to proceed with that, and then at the future meeting, we would bring those quotes back, and we would hone in on whether we recommend funding this from the liquor store fund or through the COVID relief funds that we're anticipating we receive in the coming days. So that's all I have. If we can maybe hear from Mr. Bergeraf about some of the vision related to this and how the community may benefit from this asset, I think that would be helpful.
Certainly. Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, Your Honor, distinguished council members. Thank you for inviting me here this evening. I appreciate this. About a year and a half ago was the last time that I came up and spoke to the council and offered a presentation, at which we showed the actual pieces where people have collected data throughout the state, and specifically about Fergus Falls, where the arts in this community put about $1.2 million beyond our ticket revenues in our building back into this community. And so as we were looking at the amphitheater, again, I don't have to go through all of that, but the numbers weren't working for the shows that people were talking about bringing in. And so this mobile stage unit is a wonderful piece. They use them all over the world. This particular, one of the particular ones that we are looking at, it is trailerable, and most of them are at this point in time. It folds up, it packs neatly, you put it onto the back of a truck or a trailer hitch, you drive it to where you go, and then it's all hydraulic. You plug it in, and one person with one hour can set up a 24-by-20-foot stage, three and a half feet off the ground, completely set up with lights and sound and tech, and all ready to go for different entertainment groups to come in and use that. And while I say entertainment groups, we are so excited about the RTC and the beautiful grounds that have been created behind the RTC. We've already done two concerts up there, and this summer, the Center for the Arts has set aside $40,000 for eight more concerts up at that facility, which include tributes to Neil Diamond, tributes to Tom Petty, the wonderful acapella group Tonic Sofa, and so much more. But it's not just about the arts, because Summerfest can use this over the river. We have different events that you can use it for a car show, you can use it for the library, you can use it for graduations. This is a portable unit that can be driven just about anywhere and set up within an hour and less than that for takedown. It gives the city options. We would not, the Center for the Arts is not the only group who would be using this by far. This would be a city asset that could actually and potentially drive revenues as well as people from around the area to different events that we're doing, renting this facility, renting this trailer out. It could bring additional revenues to the city besides these events that are happening. Do you have questions?
I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead, Anthony.
And I think it's a great idea, and I definitely, but I want to be just careful. Last time, you know, projects that were initiated and started before funds were allocated, the CARES funds were allocated, were not then eligible for reimbursement. Do we have any indication as to what funding, how funding is going to be? I would hate to put a resolution on the floor and then not be able to use CARE funding or whatever the new term is. But also then, what's the delivery? You know, what's the delivery time on one of these?
Thirty days. And just to answer your first question, I know staff's looked into that, and that's why tonight what we're doing is a resolution to obtain quotes, and Bill would come back with us with a recommendation of if the current COVID funds are...
Would be full, yeah.
...are eligible for such an expense, and if so, you know, make a recommendation on how we fund it.
Right. Okay, no.
That's been taken into consideration.
Good, thank you.
Completely, you're on the right page, Anthony, or the same page as staff, too. It was discussed this morning. Any other? Yeah. It's interesting.
I'll go buy a lottery ticket tonight.
Any other questions for either staff or Michael? So the resolution is simply to direct staff to obtain quotes and then come back with a recommendation for funding and also, yeah, for definitive funding sources. So someone like to offer that?
I'll make that.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Michael. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims tonight, we have claims in an amount of $2,457,875.69. And if there's any questions, we will direct them to our finance director, Bill Sommer, Scott Kwame. Go ahead.
I'll offer the resolution and then...
Sure. Thank you. We have a resolution. Would someone like to second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Krista. Go ahead, Scott.
Among the many items on the list to pay the bills this week is a pretty sizable expense that I asked Bill to comment on, and maybe you don't need to, but I can do it. We've got $104,000 for a sidearm refuse truck chassis and another $140,000, $104,000 for the assembly that sits on the chassis, totaling $209,000 for a new garbage truck. And as I understand it, this was a truck that we ordered almost two years ago, year and a half ago?
December of 2019.
December 2019. So just as in the course of how, you know, what it takes to run the city, it's a fair amount of time involved when you order something like this before you get it, on one hand, and it's a pretty sizable investment in equipment, on the other. And I just think it's important for people to realize what it costs to run the city, and I thought it would be good to point that one out.
Thanks, Scott. I would also just mention the fact of the savings that are from the city of not having two people manually putting garbage cans into the back of a truck like they did for decades. And I know you're not questioning, just to add that to it as well. So we've seen significant cost savings since we implemented the automatic refuse dumping. So with that, we have a resolution. And a second, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports or reports from staff or administrative officers. Under old business, we have an update on the airport manager FBO hiring process. We'll call in council member Justin Arneson for a quick update.
You want me to take it?
I'll let you handle that.
So just a quick update to the colleagues here on the council. March 10, we had an opportunity to meet, and the subcommittee is comprised of Andrew Yegi and Robbie Olson from the Airport Advisory Committee, myself and Krista from the council, and then Mr. Hartwell sat in with us, and we had Rolf sit in with us and Mr. Yervarol. So that's who the subcommittee is comprised of. We had a very good meeting, it took about an hour and a half, like I said, back on March 10, at 8:00 in the morning, we met in the chambers. And confidently, we've got a good process in place. Our next meeting is scheduled on March 24 here in the chambers, and we're going to have a conversation with the consultant that was hired before Landerman Brown and go over a few things. Our overall goal, we kind of set at this first meeting from a timeline standpoint, is to... kind of set at this first meeting, from a timeline standpoint, is to, there's going to be a few more meetings, obviously, involved, but meet on the 24th. And then our timeline goal is to come back before the council with a recommendation in May. So that's kind of where we're at. Not really much more to share, but unless I missed anything, that's kind of a quick update for everybody.
Thanks to both of you for observing on that meeting. It sounds like you guys had a good productive meeting and look forward to seeing what the committee brings forward in May. Any questions from the council, to either Krista or Justin?
I suppose, is there going to be a new matrix? I mean, are we, obviously, we didn't take the recommendation of the consultant, or is it going to be a recommendation as opposed to a definitive thing with the consultant? Because we had a committee that made a recommendation, we had a consultant, so...
I think the process, if I could just speak to, unless Mike has something to add, it's kind of, we're in a hybrid point right now, where we've identified some things, learned some things from the first process with the folks that were in the room, and we want to consult with the consultant to see if there's something or things that we're missing. And then after that meeting, we're going to have a clear path, if you will, and then reviewing the candidates that had applied before. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for Justin or Krista? Thank you both. There is no new business, and there are no miscellaneous announcements that I'm aware of. So with nothing else to come before the council, we are adjourned to a closed meeting, as permitted by the attorney-client privilege, to discuss active or threatened litigation pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subsection.